Tonight's agenda, I will move us directly to public communication.[5.19][5.19](APPLAUSE). During this portion of the meeting, citizens may address the council regarding items related to city business, including items on tonight's agenda. The only exception is for issues pertaining to topics that the city council either held or will be holding a public hearing on in either the last 45 days or in the next 45 days. Individual testimony is limited to three minutes or less. In order to hear from as many people as possible during the 30 minutes set aside for this purpose, the council refrains from commenting on individual testimony until all public comment has been received. I will note for the record that on August 20th, we held a public hearing regarding the Division Street annexation, and on October 8th, we are scheduled to have hearings on our wastewater management plan, our 2014 through 2019 capital facilities plan, and the proposed Cooper Point area annexation. So, public comment accepted for any items other than those, and I will invite to the podium Carol Person.
Can you hear me okay?
Excellent.
Good. I have a volunteer someplace that was going to hand out. Oh, snuck up behind me, did he? I'm here representing Protect Our Children, which is in opposition to the consideration of a low-barrier shelter in Olympia. And in the process, we decided it might be beneficial to ask you to sign a pledge to not support it. So I'd like to read what the pledge is as it's being distributed. To the mayor Stephen Buxbaum, Mayor Pro Tem Nathaniel Jones, council members Jim Cooper, Julie Hinkins, Stephen Langer, Janine Rowe, and Karen Rogers, candidates Prophet Atlantis, Darren Mills, Cheryl Selby, and Mike Volz. Children are the most valuable, excuse me, vulnerable members of our society, and we owe them a life free of violence and fear. Yet here in Olympia, an organization is proposing to open a low-barrier shelter that will house sex offenders, drug addicts, and other people who refuse to play by the rules. This low-barrier shelter poses a clear threat and does not belong near our children, the elderly, and other vulnerable populations. It is time for Olympia's leaders to put children first and sign the Protect Our Children pledge. Please mail the signed pledge postmarked by September 23rd, 2013, to the address below. And the pledge further states, "I will retract all political and financial support for any low-barrier shelter open to sex offenders, drug addicts, or criminals located within one-half mile of any of the following: public schools, private schools, trade schools, and colleges; daycare facilities, after-school facilities, and child nurseries; neighborhoods, whether formally recognized or not; downtown; public parks, private parks, playgrounds, sports fields, and trails; hospitals and other medical facilities; senior citizen facilities, and group homes for seniors; group homes and facilities for the mentally disabled; group homes and facilities for other vulnerable populations." So what we're asking is that, this time, let's put our children first. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeffrey Jaksic?
Hi. My name is Jeff Jaksic, and I live at 812 San Francisco Avenue, Northeast Olympia, Washington. And you know my background, many of you. I've obviously been around 30-plus years involved with this community. I also have a real priority for children, and I did attend the meeting last night at the Knox Building, and I acknowledge some of the good things we've done. In fact, this community has done an exceptional job at serving the homeless over the last 30-plus years. We have so many exemplary programs here, and to be frank with you, I had some concerns about the meeting, once the decision was made not to locate it at 10th and East Side. How that decision was made is something I'm actually going to put before you as a real concern. Certainly Carol gave you an overview of the concern of the community. It reflects a large part of our community, and it's very, very serious. We can't afford to have these type of decisions made without really considering the children. Last night, a businessperson who was attending the meeting actually said he didn't have that much concern about the risk to children. But you see, I think our community starts with children. That's our future, and they have to be first and foremost in our community. I'm one who quite frankly likes the idea of providing shelter for the homeless. I think there are especially, I have sort of priorities, and I'm going to share them with you briefly. Mothers and children, I want to commend you for the work in the Smith Building. I think that's a really good move. So mothers, children, if we keep families together, as long as they're not recovering ALKs, alcoholics, excuse me, and mentally ill. I think we need to create a special situation for them, especially with the state cutting back on mental health. And what I heard last night wasn't a fully formed proposal, nothing that any professional would really look at. So we need to really involve the community in this type of thing, and I would like to suggest that either the Planning Commission, which is really, really busy, or Steve Langer and the Land Use Committee take a look at developing a criteria for citing these facilities. We need to take care of the mentally ill. We need to help the people that are recovering addicts. We really need to focus in on facilities that help them. But I thought this was just going to be a cold-weather shelter, and it turns out it's not. It's not well-thought-out, no location. And so I'm going to give you some criteria that was developed by the Coalition and Neighborhood Associations, and I would hope that you would consider that, Steve, and I'm sure we could get citizens in the community to come and help you come up with a criteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Dickinson?
Good evening, council. Actually, this is the first time I've ever come to speak to council. I left in 2004, so I hope that that means something to you and why I'm here. I want you to seriously consider, as quickly as possible, to create some kind of park standards for private park development. I know that you, as a council, as well as the Park Department, have been cognizant of the West Olympia Business Association and their park plans for the last four years. So I'm kind of surprised why some kind of plan, you know, standards haven't been met. The reason I'm here today is that I've been slowly watching the private park at Division in Harrison be built. I live on the west side, as you know, for over 20 years, and actually really tried to get partners, neighbors, people with money, developers, try to do something with that corner because it would be nice to have, you know, a really nice mixed-use development with some local businesses there where people could gather, and I think people would have been happy with that. Not going to complain about a park, okay? And, you know, some people may say, "Well, you know, a well-designed 7-Eleven may be better than what I'm seeing today at the corner." Okay? So I'm walking Archie this morning, and I had to do a looky-loo rubberneck because I've been looking at that park thinking, "Gosh, it's beginning to look like a county rest stop." Okay? And today was a pretty defining day, you know, and that's with the big logs. And then the signage came up, and I thought, "Well, you know, maybe it looks like Jellystone National Park," and I could, you know, visualize Yogi Bear popping up at any minute. So today, there's the Santa Can, and when I was walking Archie, I said, "What? Oh, there's some benches." And, you know, when I was on the council, we had a whole process. We hired someone to do a standard for city benches. And, hey, I have a couple extra minutes because I've never been here before, but anyway, the, you know, I look and I see these benches. And so I was captivated, and I looked, and, you know, you need to come over to the west side. I know that the downtown is the problem child, and as a council member, I know that you spend a lot of time. You need to drive over to that corner because there are benches that are church pews that have been painted brown, and this is on top of the logs. And, you know, with the grass and maybe the new trees, this might look good now, but this winter, it's not going to look good at all. And I'm aware that, you know, this is a very prominent corner, that there needs to be design review for these standards, and this is wrong. I, you know, I'm going to spend the rest of my life driving by this park, and it's wrong. And you need to do something about it, and that's why I just wanted to say, okay.
Thanks very much. Stephen Welliver?
I'm sure you're all aware of recent headlines about heroin use at the library and multiple gun incidents, felons in possession of weapons downtown. The number of syringes exchanged in Olympia by the Thurston County Syringe Exchange alone is on pace to exceed 1.2 million. This by far eclipses the total amount of public library materials circulated, either hard copy and digital. That is why I'm here to talk about our city's future and its priorities. One day this summer, my son crashed on his bike twice in one trip on the Olympia Woodland Trail, both times within inches of a dirty, uncapped needle. I have abruptly canceled outings with my sons at each and every East Side park this summer due to syringes, not just in the bushes where my kids like to hide, but on the playgrounds and under picnic benches. Kids in a lower-income neighborhood who live in small and stressful homes, can't afford and can't afford many books, really need their parks to be healthy and their library to gain literacy skills. Today, I walked the perimeter of the Madison School Attendance' Area, taking photos of the evidence of IV drug use littering our community. I'll email you that collage I made so you can see in just a half-hour walk. King Five TV has done a series of reports on heroin in Stanwood area, where teens report it is as easy to get as going through a fast-food drive-through. Teens report that it is cheap and easier to obtain than cigarettes, marijuana, or alcohol. Forty students at their local high school had begun using heroin in this past year alone. I am asking the city council, in their role as civic leaders and officials, to help make heroin a focus of our town's cleanup efforts. I must emphasize that this cannot be accomplished by law enforcement alone, and this time, let's please not forget to include schools as a stakeholder. We must not be afraid to have uncomfortable conversations with enabling nonprofit social service groups. Seattle People's Harm Reduction Alliance, which is Eggy Hop's needle service, unapologetically states on its website that it is indeed not a needle exchange, but rather a needle distribution program, who gives up to 300 needles to every person a day, whether they have dirty needles to return or not. This group is run, the group is run at all levels of organization by users for users, says its website. It also says, "What if the NAACP was run by an all-white board? Surely, they would be missing something." Well, they would indeed be missing something, and not just perspective. If the NAACP was run at all levels of organization by folks who are high on smack, then they wouldn't be effective or have any credibility. Yes, they would indeed be missing something, and not just a crap-load of dirty needles. They would appear to have missed the ravaging effects on the broader community, starting in the poppy fields of Mexico and carving a swath of violence and human suffering that terminates in our city's core, where civic life has been severely disrupted. Please make heroin a number-one priority in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Burgess?
Yeah, my name's Richard Burgess. I live at 1309 Fern Street, Olympia Southwest. And I'm way too scatterbrained to really read anything, but I try to write stuff down. I'm way too scatterbrained for that, too. This is my fifth time addressing the city council. I've had serious air quality issues. Right now, I have, there's an audit from the Washington State Financial Commission on Housing. This is like the fifth time this year that people have entered my apartment for inspections, or pseudo-inspections, a fire inspection, I passed the Thurston County Housing Inspection. This is like the fifth time. I feel like I'm being targeted, and I've been having air quality issues not only the entire time in Olympia, which is very much suspect and caused significant health concerns. I'd like to say that, well, it looks like the clock's not working too well.
I was noticing that.
Yeah, for a bit of levity, the Christmas items are on sale, have been since August 26th, at Goodwill in Olympia. And for the homeless thing, I think people should, they should direct it more toward warehouse space and then ship it around, put it on John in the area, and then ship that around. You don't want to trumpet it too much. For financially for Olympia, you need to get a paper map about quarterly, several times a year. It's got all the, from antiques to xylophones, a map of Olympia, financial district. You use barcodes, you use apps, you know where to find stuff. Also, make it more easily for people to contribute to whatever cause they want via text or whatever. So make it easy for people to contribute money to your city. And, yeah, I got an audit coming up. I feel I'm being targeted. I've been in here over five years, and I come from the east coast, northern Virginia, and one day, the air turned to liquid glue ammonia. And I live near 15039 Braddock Road, Centerville, Virginia. My parents lived at 15027 Braddock Road, Centerville, Virginia, near Starry Night. It's western Fairfax County, where they spent hundreds of millions of dollars on high-tech, United States government buildings, entities, a couple hundred million dollars worth of stuff. And, yeah, the air turned to liquid glue ammonia, and I haven't been left alone. So I've been illegally medicated, and I have been harassed by law enforcement since 1977, and it's definitely accelerated in the past couple months in Olympia. I know they want to take my picture, but when they kind of creep up and, you know, snap my picture, whatever, I can handle all that stuff. My main concern is I've got an audit coming up on the 27th of October. And, yeah, I'm at 915-4596, 1360-915-4596. I just want to get some backing. I'm a good guy. I've got no criminal record. I've returned wallets and gold cards that I find on the street and everything like that. So I appreciate all the help that Olympia's given me. I'm on Section 8 Housing, and hopefully I can relieve some stress and make it through this audit, to say the least. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Burgess. Is there anyone else that would like to comment this evening? Anyone else? Public comment is closed, and I will turn now to council response. Councilmember responses or questions. Councilmember Rogers?
Well, Jeanette, it's always a pleasure to see you. I wasn't going to respond because I was going to allow that for Steve Langer. Three quick things. The petition for Carol Person, I have no problem signing that. I appreciate that you include downtown. A lot of people forget that downtown is also a neighborhood. And as far as half a mile, quite frankly, I wouldn't even mind putting it, putting the distance greater than that. Steve Welliger, Needles. Two weeks ago, I attended Olympia Downtown Association meeting, and needles did come up. Bill McGregor, who's a port commissioner, he was saying how more needles are being found on the port property. As a matter of fact, they found some that are in the lookout tower just outside Anthony's. And one of the people pointed out, "Well, what happens if you have a five-year-old kid who's walking with his or her parents, goes up in the tower ahead of the parents, falls there, touches it, whatever?" It's not like that's, that is unheard of. It is a huge concern. That was something that came out very strongly at the meeting, that it's, the downtown's being overwhelmed with needles, and living in the East Side neighborhood, I know it's not just downtown. After the meeting, I was talking with someone, and you did mention Eggy Hop, or an organization that's, I think, affiliated with it. I don't know if this is true, but what I heard is that Eggy Hop handles, hands out 800 needles daily on average, and collects 300 needles daily on average. So that means every five, every day, we've got 500 needles that are out there, and where are they going? An exchange, I can appreciate, but I'd like that exchange to be one-to-one, not three-to-one. We do have, you know, we want to help certain populations, but not at the expense of several others, namely, children and even our own staff. A couple of years ago, we had a scare. One of our staff members was taking out the garbage from a can and pricked his hand with a needle. So adequate, proper disposal is an absolute. Another thing I want to mention, it's related, but it is talking about the low-barrier shelter issue. We have a person who is running for Olympia City Council, Mike Vols. He owns a business and a building in downtown, and he's spoken out against the low-barrier shelter. About two, three weekends ago, his windows were damaged, and he called the cops wanting to know, you know, was this an isolated event, or did this happen to a whole bunch of businesses that weekend? As it turns out, his building was the only one that had damage that weekend. I have a lot of concern with that one. This is not the first time this has happened, this kind of retaliation. It happened to Brian Kolb, and that's thousands of dollars. Those windows are not cheap. Someone owes both of them, as far as I'm concerned, a huge apology and a big check to go with it. Insurance isn't cheap. People have their policies canceled. This will drive businesses out of downtown. Let's see. One other point with this shelter in being downtown, because that's what's now being proposed by Interfaith Works, is we have tried something like this before. Bread and Roses used to be located around downtown, and it created quite a bit of a problem. Surrounding business owners did have building damage, needles, and excrement, among some other things. So I hope that this council does take this into account, our support of the low-barrier shelter, the problems it can impose, as well as the fact that, another thing I learned at that Olympia Downtown Association meeting two weeks ago, was that Connie Lorenz reported out that six business owners have already said that they're going to be moving out of downtown once their leases expire. So can we accommodate this type of development? What's going to happen? How many more people are going to move out of downtown if this goes through? And that's the reality we need to face. It's not just about, it's not just about being generous and wanting to help people. It's about how many we can help, where we can help them. And I do agree with Jeff Jaksic. Thank you for pointing that out, and I hope your suggestions include those issues. Thank you.
Further councilmember comment, questions, or response? Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
So I want to thank Stephen Welliger for coming and speaking with us this evening. I want to acknowledge that indeed there is a problem in Olympia with heroin and heroin use. I think it's also important to put that in context, that this is both a regional and a national problem as well, that we're not facing this alone. We are looking for strategies to deal with the situation. I think your coming and highlighting it this evening is useful and helpful to us, and we are wrestling with this problem along with many others. It's a serious problem that needs to be addressed. So thank you for coming and talking with us.
Councilmember Rowe, followed by Councilmember Langer.
Well, I have two questions or comments. One, with regard to Jeanette Hawker Dickinson's comments about the park, the private park on the west side. Could staff please explain if we have any role at all in terms of private parks and the benches and how it looks?
We don't have a role in terms of a standard-type role, depending upon what type of development they may or may not need to get a permit, and then there would be a role for review. But there isn't a role in terms of determining what it should look like or not look like if it's a private park.
So I guess, how do we address the issue that, I understand what she's saying when, if it's, I was just up there yesterday and looked around, and I think it looks pretty nice right now, but the point is, come winter, if it is church pews that have been painted, they will deteriorate, and I, I'm not sure how we respond to her concerns about, could we, could it go to parks? I mean, what do we do?
I think we'd have to watch and see what happens, and then if there are concerns, it's something that could be referred to land use to determine whether or not we want to add some additional requirements or standards.
Okay. I just wanted to follow up on it and get some, maybe potential future guidelines on private parks and what could and could, should be allowed, and, but it's wonderful that the park is there. It's great, but we do need to make sure that it remains a lovely park. So, secondly, I wanted to thank Stephen Welliver for coming forward tonight with regard to the heroin issue and children. It takes tremendous courage to come up and talk to the council and be on TV, and especially about an issue like that. We hear from the homeless advocates quite often, and in a very vocal manner, and it's not very often that we hear from the community. So I really appreciate hearing a parent have the courage to come up and say it as it is. We have a heroin issue in Olympia. We do. We have a needle issue in Olympia. I was at an unnamed restaurant this weekend, and they said that somebody had put their foot in the garbage can to smash down the garbage and got the needle jammed up the side of their leg. And it takes several months to determine whether you have contracted something or not. And I just hope, as a council, we can really move forward, especially in our budget process of getting funding back into the Thurston County Narcotics Squad and getting, really taking this seriously. It's suddenly out of control, and I, I have some real issues about, I know it's good to hand out the clean needles, but what are we doing in our city to help prevent addiction and help these people get off of heroin? What are we doing in this society that in our, that people are getting more and more addicted, and we have all of these nonprofit programs? But I don't know, I think, maybe could staff tell us, give us a definition of the different needle exchanges in Olympia, and a summary of who does what, why, what's the follow-up with people? I mean, is it truly just handing out needles? Like, I think you read about the Eggy Hop statement. Is it handing out needles and just saying, "Here's a clean needle," or is it truly, are there other programs that are trying to assist people to get off of the drugs? Because at this point, I feel like we're enabling people to stay on the heroin, and that's not going to help the city of Olympia at all. So I would just ask that, could we possibly get more reliable information on the facts from our police department, the Narcotics Squad, the different nonprofits? What are we doing in Olympia with regard to this heroin use and the needle exchange? And let the public know. We don't want people afraid to go in the parks. We don't want families afraid to step on, their kid to step on a needle, and we don't want our workers downtown pushing a garbage can down with their foot and slamming a needle into their legs. So I really feel like it's, it's getting out of hand, and I, I hope that, as a city, we can move forward and really tackle this and get some correct information as well from the, from our staff. So thank you to all of you for speaking up tonight.
Councilmember Langer?
Thank you, Mayor Buxbaum. First of all, I do appreciate Stephen, was it Welliger?
Welliver.
Welliver, okay. I wasn't, didn't quite hear that. Coming forward with the needle problem. I guess the concern I have is that it's easy to be really reactive to these things, and I think we need to make sure that whatever it is that we do works. I think we need to make sure that whatever it is that we do works. So, because I, I think that we, in the past, have done a lot of things that haven't been very effective, so I want to make sure that whatever we do is something that actually makes a difference. Certainly, the needle exchange was established for a good reason, but I certainly, because that prevents the passing on of diseases from addict to addict, from other needle users. But I do also agree that having an exchange means actually an exchange, where somebody gives you a used needle, they get a, they get a fresh needle, an unused needle, so that we don't have the needles all over town. I think that is, I agree that that's a big problem. And there is a certain role that the city has in dealing with this problem, and there is a role that other agencies and other, other, like, for example, the state of Washington has in dealing with this. And I, and we can't get into a situation where we start providing services and things that we simply don't have the capacity to do. So, we have to be really smart about how we approach this issue from our perspective and the part that we can do something about. I know that, right now, that the whole West Coast is flooded with cheap heroin, and it's certainly showing up in Olympia, and, and in fact, Seattle has this problem, Portland has this problem, Tacoma has this problem, these, these are all, all over the I-5 corridor, there are huge problems with, with lots of heroin being out there and being inexpensive and very available. So, I think we need to be careful in, in how we do this, so that we spend our very limited resources wisely. In terms of the, what Jeff Jaksic talked about, about priority for children and Carol Person, I'd be happy to talk to you about this after, after the meeting or some other time. And, and it's, and I think, and I appreciate, actually, Councilmember Rowe's questions to the staff about standards for parks, because she, basically, I, we got an answer so far for kind of how we should approach this. And I do agree that we should look at these kinds of issues and see what, what our role is, but make sure that we do what, again, what makes sense and what we have authority to do, since it is, after all, private property, it's not public property.
Councilmember Hankins.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who came forward tonight, because I think it's, you're doing us a great service, because you're explaining and illustrating to the public that there is not a single problem downtown, there are multiple different problems. And as much as we want there to be a magic bullet that solves it all, there aren't, there isn't one. And I, and I've known that, and it really hit home to me last Thursday night, when I did a ride along with the Olympia Police Department. What you read about in the paper Friday night, I was standing on the periphery of the night, the night before, from midnight, from eight to midnight downtown, getting to see firsthand. And it really, even though I know that, I'm not naive about what's going on downtown, it's a totally different perspective when you're in that moment. And there's a heroin problem, there's all kinds of issues, and again, one answer isn't going to be, is not going to solve all of them. And the reason it's important is that we come together and understand that, and that we start working together. We need to have a conversation, and I know I say that all the time, but it's the only way we're going to do something different in this community and make a difference. But we need to bring together the neighborhoods, the downtown association, the business owners downtown, the police department, the, the social services providers. It's only then, with the city, with all the people who live here, that's when we're going to have those honest conversations and deal with heroin, and that's going to take a different solution. Deal with homeless, and that's going to take a different solution. Deal with the travelers, that's a different solution. We have to use all our resources, and we have to use them wisely, and we're not going to do that until we start coming together. We all know there's a problem, we can all agree on that, and now we have to figure out how we all have a piece that we can put into this puzzle to help solve the problem and work towards a solution. So, thank you for bringing it forward, and I look forward to working with all of you so that we actually do start looking and really addressing these issues.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Buckswell. So, really quick, I thank you, sorry, I lost your name, it was Stephen, for the comments around the needles, it's, it's a very big issue, as I stated last week after we had those comments. A couple of thoughts. The first thought is the Thurston County Solid Waste Plan is out for public comment right now, and a comment to add needle exchange and needle cleanup to the solid waste plan would be helpful in that process. So, if we can do that as individuals, that, I think that would help. They have some ideas, but needing to tap into that solid waste funding that the county has available from other sources is, is, has to be in the plan first. The second thing I would say is that maybe, it sounds like people are pretty passionate, maybe there's a place down the road for a, a study session with our police department and public health and social services around the needle exchange and prevalence of drug abuse in our, in our community. It'll be eye-opening for you, I'm sure.
Mayor Protem Jones.
I would ask that we just move forward and schedule that study session, if you pass it to agenda setting.
Is that of interest to council? Okay, let me clarify what, what the focus of the study session is, and if council will permit me, I'll just make a brief comment on that issue myself. I, I think this is a very important conversation to have. One of the things that I have repeatedly done in the last three years in conversations with constituents is let people know how many needles are exchanged in this community each year. We have had a dramatic rise this year in terms of distribution. I do appreciate the comments that we've shared tonight. It is a, a social issue that reaches far beyond the city of Olympia, and it is a regional issue. And in our state, the county health board, which is, our three county commissioners, has primary responsibility for health, and they do receive resources for the needle exchange program, which has been a valuable program historically, in essentially to help protect our public safety. The intent of the program was to keep needles out of the playgrounds and other places. So, this is an important conversation to have in a comprehensive way. I, I think it, it's something that we should consider including the county on directly, and specifically the county health department. I would ask for a little bit of latitude at this point, in terms of perhaps some scoping on the part of staff with county health department, and particularly our police department and the sheriff's department. We have some near-term issues to address regarding our budget and our participation in the narcotics task force. And certainly, I'd like to expedite those conversations in the context of the budget, but perhaps at this point, we could ask for some scoping on the part of staff and a recommendation back about how we might frame a study session, before we just simply schedule it. And I just, Mayor Protem Jones, I, I know you're asking for something to be put on the calendar right away, and I'm sensitive to the, the complexity of the issue and trying to sort of prioritize what parts of it we can bite off piece by piece, first in the context of our budget, second, in terms of who the right partners are to have at the table. So, would scoping be acceptable as a first step? Mayor Protem Jones.
I think that's a reasonable response, but I would also point out that I, I don't think that this is a discussion that's going to conclude with one study session, I think this is a, a long-term undertaking that's going to take a concerted effort.
Very good. Councilmember Rowe.
I think we should just, we should go ahead and schedule something, like Councilmember Cooper was suggesting, and get the ball rolling, and, and it could lead into further discussions down the road, but I'd really like to, to get some factual information that we can get out to the public. It just feels like it's really escalated, and the public is anxious to hear as well. So, even if it's just some facts that we could hear from the police, we don't, I don't know that it has to, how extensive it needs to be, but just an update on, that we could have in the more near term.
Very good. So, I'm, I'm hearing a request for a fact-based approach to an initial work session specific to needle exchange and heroin. Councilmember Rogers.
I actually agree with both of you wanting to schedule this, but also scope it carefully. I'd like to know what other cities have done to solve this problem, and also, in the interim, make sure that we're sending out the message to anyone who does a needle exchange, that we want a one-to-one exchange. To me, that's a priority. I know, I, from what I've heard, it's our police department, they're, they're getting overwhelmed with this, they're getting overwhelmed with calls, complaint calls about the needles, and that seems to be something that could at least alleviate the problem in the near term.
Councilmember Rowe.
And also with, with other cities, if, if they have needles on wheels, so to speak, the Iggy Hop takes it around town, the needles, I, I'm wondering if other cities have one spot in town? Like, everyone would know there's one spot in Olympia that you can go to for a needle exchange, and not have it potentially throughout the town. So, I'd like to know what other cities do in terms of the actual needle exchange location, and if, if others also have them around town or one location, that type of information.
Okay, do we have a, I'm just going to look at staff at this point, do you have enough to?
We have plenty to work on. We, we are not in this business of needle exchange or public health or correcting IV drug use. We are in the business of unfortunately dealing with needles and arresting people who sell heroin. So, most of what you've asked, we'll have to ask others for who can bring forward what's happening. So, we have plenty to work on. Thanks.
Great. So, and again, I, I appreciate the clarity of the city manager's response in terms of, I mean, our primary partner in this endeavor is the health department and, and the county, and I appreciate staff's willingness to provide some facts for us to start working on. Councilmember Langer.
Yes, thank you. I just, I, I guess I want to sort of add one piece, which is that, you know, I think, as you pointed out, there's a certain role that the city has, but I think that it's important that we are part of a comprehensive, I don't know, solution might be too optimistic a word, but at least a comprehensive plan for dealing with it. And, and I guess, the more we can get ourselves aligned with other players who have a role in this, the better, rather than just reacting without getting all the resources to bear on this issue in a way where we're more likely to make a difference.
Mayor Protem Jones.
So, I'd like to take the, the discussion just a little bit different direction. I'd like to reflect and echo some of the comments that I heard Councilmember Hankins, excuse me, Hankins address earlier. There are a number of different issues that are facing our community, many of those are focused in our downtown area, they spill over into other areas, and I think that it is easy to blur some lines, and these are complex issues, and they also are multifaceted. We are dealing with people who are destitute, we are people, dealing with people who have mental health issues, we are dealing with people who have a variety of problems, addictions. For each individual, there is a set of problems that has a community impact, and I, I would just like to remind all of us that there is a distinction in the response to someone who is destitute than there is to someone who is addicted, to someone who is carrying out criminal behaviors. These are, these are different actions and behaviors that require a different response. And I think that often, in our conversation, we blur those lines, and it's very easy to, to group people together. So, I would ask that we try to be clear about which problems we're trying to address and which strategies we're using in, in that process. Thank you.
Okay. So, obviously, there's a lot of pieces to this conversation, and we won't be able to satisfactorily deal with it, just in response to public comment this evening. But I appreciate the interest expressed, and it, we have some next steps that we'll take in order to have a more substantive conversation about the issue of both needle exchange and drug addiction, and particularly heroin in our community. So, I want to move us forward. I do want my opportunity to just make one additional response to public comment this evening, and I want to speak to the, the park on the corner of Harrison and Division, which is a private parcel. And I just want to make sure that we don't leave out one important part of the story related to that part, related to that private park. It is a private parcel. However, there is a high level of neighborhood engagement in that piece of property, and there actually has been historically a high level of neighborhood engagement in the use of that property. So, I, I don't want to leave this discussion without honoring and recognizing that we have a very active neighborhood association, which 27 years ago I used to be a member of, that has had a long conversation about how to use that property in the best interest for the neighborhood. So, whenever the city talks about standards and policies and practices, I think that's a part of our process of communicating and working directly with the neighbors and the neighborhood of concern. And I believe actually, right now, this very minute, there is a discussion happening in the West Side Neighborhood Association about the use of that property. And I want to honor the work of the neighborhood in charting their own destiny and doing planning that's appropriate, in appropriate scale to that area of our city. So, with that, I'm looking to my colleagues and going to move beyond public comment. Is that okay? All right. So, I'm going to take us to the consent calendar. Before I-